I have to call to order the Douglas zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, August 8th at 7:03 PM. I'd like to welcome to the board a recently appointed member, Jen Harland, who's appointed by the Board of Selectmen to be an alternate. And the next item is that time of year for the board to reorganize. So we need to...
I thought we already did that.
No, we haven't done it in thirteen months.
Okay.
You did, didn't you?
No, we don't.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, I remember this.
It's not in any of the minutes.
All right, well, somebody messed up. Well, the way it went was you were chairman and she was co-chair. We left it at that.
Yeah, we did that.
I second that.
Okay, all right, we'll do it again then. So a motion's been made to Mr. Heaney. Chairman and Pam Holmes is co-chair. And he's second.
Second, all right. Maybe I missed the...
Second, yes. That's good to hear.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The first agenda item is case number 2018-09, public hearing that was continued for Louis Tassino, 103 Shore Drive. It's the applicant and his counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Cheryl Shugrill on behalf of Louis Tassino seeking a variance for the lot that he owns on Shore Road, which I know you've had before you on other occasions. Essentially, the difference in this particular application is at this point, we are only seeking dimensional setback requirements from the zoning bylaw. And that would be the side setbacks and the frontage setbacks. And that's on page six, I guess it would be, of your, the application that we filed. Essentially, our position is that without a doubt, and we have accumulated thirty-four cases in which this board has allowed, especially in this area and all of the lake areas, variances where the, certainly lots don't meet the zoning requirements in many instances. And I know the first question is going to be, how do you satisfy area and frontage? And we are now taking the position that we own Shore Road, we have taken that position, and we have indicated that in cases that were filed, that we own the road, and that's well over two acres, and we have certainly over 200 feet of frontage on the road. And there are land, there's a land court case, Reeve versus Godfrey, in which the court indicated that a primary question for land court is whether an area consisting of a private way should be included in the lot size. And in that case, it was voted, or found, yes, they could.
What was the date of that, Jerry?
Date of that? July 12th, 2016. And that's, so that's after whatever was done before. So we believe that that accomplishes the two very important problems that we've had, and that is frontage and also area. In all of the other cases that you've had, that I don't think those parties have had that to rely on. And we say now that we do have that right to rely on it, and that we would ask that that be considered when you're dealing with our application. I know we have the application in front of you. And listen to that as just how we say that the shape into photography or whatever makes this a lot that can be considered. Literal enforcement of the bylaw does not certainly derogate from the intentions of this board. This was a community that was planned out by Mr. Lalumur from Rhode Island a long time ago, I think it was back in the 50s it was started. And gradually, you've seen what's taken place over there, that summer cottages are now homes, large and expanded homes. And I know you have other, other cases that have come before you. In any event, we feel that relief, if granted, will not be a detriment to the public, as this is probably the last lot on the water on that side, so that gradually, the whole area has been built up. And I'd point out to you that the town in the past has taken, taken some of these lots for tax purposes, and then gone out and advertised these lots as, well under two acres, well, well under 200 feet of frontage, and have advertised them as buildable lots. So in any event, I think our case this time is different because we feel that we can rely on Godfrey, that we can use the ownership of the road, and we can use the frontage on the road as requirements that are met. And the only thing we need are slight variances on the setbacks. And that's essentially our presentation.
Do any members have any questions or comments?
Can we make a decision on this particular structure where it's already been decided on? Or would this, would this go to the piece of property?
I thought Town Council was going to be here tonight, but now he's not.
Yeah, he texted me or emailed me that, he asked if we were going forward, and I indicated him we were, so...
Yeah. And he told me if you were moving forward, that he'd be here. So, I mean, I think that's a legitimate question.
Well, I just don't know how we can make a decision on something that's been decided by the court. How we have the right to override. I would just like some clarification on that before you...
Okay, one thing I would point out, that you know that we have the right to come every two years.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and I'm not denying that. My question is, is the structure, every two years, I would assume you have the right to come and petition the board to get relief for the lot. But if that structure's already been decided on, my question is, do we have the right to even challenge that decision, but that the court has made?
The issue on the structure is before the appeals court right now.
So then, how do we, my question, then how do we make it?
Well, we have the right to come here, so we're kind of on catch-22 situation.
So, we are too.
Yeah. I think you probably need his guidance.
As we do.
We do, we certainly do.
I think you've got time, it's up until September, so whatever day, 28, 15?
Yeah, I think we need some extension.
September 28th.
I would want some clarification on that before I could make a decision comfortably on it.
We've given a couple continuances.
Yeah, yeah. Right, there are a couple continuances that you've asked for, and I guess...
Legal implications would be if we made a decision on something that was already called over.
I have six other handouts too, so when you're making your decision, you can consider all of these things.
What do they pertain to?
It pertains to the issues that...
All of the above?
All of the above.
I want to make sure we get a copy for the file.
Yes. All right. So is the board's position, we should get a continuance, so we can get counsel on this and...
So move.
Yeah, I believe we need clarification.
Yeah, I want a continuance on the date, the end date, since we've given a couple of continuances from, by the party.
So, I guess we'd like to continue to a September meeting and just bump out the decision date to thirty days as well, which is what we did when you asked for continuance, so that would be...
I understand.
Second that.
Okay, so we have...
September 12th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick to continue case number 2018-09, to, I'm sorry, Maria, September?
September 12th.
12.
At 7:00 PM.
We need to check and make sure that our counsel...
Actually, Maria, why don't we make that 7:15?
Okay.
Okay. So, great, we'll plan to see you then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll make sure we have counsel, so we can hopefully wrap this up.
Hopefully, he'll just tell you you can do it.
Yep.
I'm sure he will.
All right. Jerry?
All right.
Glasses?
I'm just reading, I don't think I need it.
Actually, I think the next case, New Year and Butter, to 42 Shore Road?
I think so.
We're just trying to exercise your look.
Yeah, breaking that new hip.
I need it, I need it, I need the exercise.
Did you get a grease setting in there?
Yes.
Okay. The next case is case number 2018-06, public hearing continued for Andrew and Ruth Parker, 42 Shore Road. We are going to, just have to wait one minute, Henry, I don't, can't start it sooner than...
We saw your look at the clock, Henry. You know you know the rules.
Okay, 7:15 is the applicant or the representative? What was yours?
As we discussed at that last meeting, the Parkers are requesting that they be permitted to withdraw their petition without prejudice.
And was it building permit issue?
Yes.
All right, so we have a request.
Building is speculative right here, so...
We have a request to accept the withdrawal of the application for 42 Shore Road from Andrew and Ruth Parker. I think there's some materials that back up what Attorney Lane and Attorney Talaman had done some work, and in fact, the lot was grandfathered, is what it boiled down to.
Those are the handouts that we received tonight?
I don't believe it is. You think so?
All right, here we go. It was in our folder.
Yes.
Did you open it?
I did.
Look at that. No, you just went by it, I think. No, 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 sorry, Tom Douglas, that's not Mr.... Maybe they didn't give you one, because they figured you already knew it.
Well, it's not like I read here, there it is.
That's an early edition, there's about three more after that.
This is the earliest edition of the third edition?
That's the, I think, what's the date of that?
The 11th.
Yeah, that's the first edition, there's three more versions.
Much better out there?
Yeah, they keep getting better.
What would expect? I think at the last meeting, Attorney Talaman had asked Attorney Lane to supply him with some proof that the lot was in fact grandfathered. And I know I had gotten an email that Attorney Talaman was satisfied with the materials that were supplied to him, that in fact, the lot is grandfathered, and they do not need a variance, special permit.
Well, I'll move that we accept the withdrawal request for case number 2018-06 by Mr. and Mrs. Parker.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Bombara, to accept the letter of withdrawal, letter of withdrawal without prejudice from counsel for Mr. and Mrs. Parker. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, yeah, about forty, thirteen minutes before the next case, so, excuse me? No, actually, Bill's going to join us for discussion about Brown Village. So you'd like to join us, Bill?
Sure.
And the town administrator, Bill, Attorney Talaman, and myself had a discussion, and we think that would be best for the applicant and for the board if we met monthly. It's a big project, there's a lot going on, and we, in order to keep everybody up to speed, we thought that would be a good, good policy, and the applicant could come in and give us an update on where he stands on different things, and Bill can do the same, and I think at least for the foreseeable future, that would be good, good practice.
Make it easier for everybody.
Yeah, because a lot of things do happen, it's a big project, and sometimes they need things on short notice, and we're possibly somewhat behind on the status of things. So, Tim, would you like to join us as well?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to give Bill the floor, and Bill can give us an update on things.
So, with regard to the updates, I agree that monthly is a good schedule, only because at the moment, we're off track on a few things that are, conditions that are within the decision. So I think until the time we become back on track, we, we then maybe step that down to maybe quarterly or something like that, just to keep the board up to date. But, you know, I want to make sure that progress is continuing to be made to meet the conditions in the decision. We're definitely working with the developer to try and make sure that they're on track with the requirements of the decision. And so that's, that's an ongoing monitoring issue, and we try to do the best we can, Larry and I. Now, we did have a meeting, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, the, the issue currently before the ZBA and through the various departments in the town, primarily the fire department and the water department, there is an issue that we're working on to address relative to fire suppression within the site. We want to make sure that there's adequate water supply in the event that there's a need to put out a fire. So currently, I know the developer and the water and sewer department and the fire chief are working closely with an engineer to design an underground cistern on the site. We'd like to continue to see that move forward as quickly as possible, only because, again, they've got a number of building permits that are active at the site. We're kind of hitting a wall up against the three permits that the board allowed at the last meeting for occupancies. They've requested one of the three, so we've got two more that'll probably be forthcoming. And, you know, that could come relatively quickly, certainly before the next meeting. And so I'm hopeful that we can get a good schedule, a firm schedule, on what the plan of attack is to address this cistern, so that everybody's on the same page, the water and sewer, the developer, the engineer, and the fire department. So that's my hope. So, and I think having these progress meetings monthly until we get back on track would be a good thing. Now, that being said, there is one thing that I wanted to bring up with the board and get some guidance from the board. I did mention this to Tim briefly at a meeting we had previously, and it pertains to the buildings and what the comp permit approved, and, and what was submitted under the building permit applications, and what was actually constructed in the field. So if you look in your packet, did you have a copy for Tim?
No, you said you had two.
Yeah.
You need to give those.
We'll share. Yeah, okay. So in your packet, you'll see some colorful charts, starting with this one. What I noticed in looking at this and monitoring the progress on the project is that the yellow on this first sheet represents the existing building footprint that's out in the field. And I noticed clearly, there's a discrepancy from what was permitted and approved. So that raised some concerns with me, so I started looking into it a little more. And so I asked the building commissioner if we could take a look at their files, and what I noticed, there, there's a set of drawings that were approved under the ZBA comprehensive permit. That's this set of drawings, okay? So if you take a look at that, the building permit is this set of drawings. So you'll notice there are some clear differences, the number of windows, the garage style, the facade, basically. The building set has a flush exterior, where, where the ZBA approved permit has some bump outs and some jogs, so it's a little more architectural. And then, I also have a photo of what's being constructed out there. And if you take a look, you'll see that there is, excuse me, that there is a 2B garage, and that's on neither of the submitted sets. There's no farmer's porch that was on what was submitted previously. So there's discrepancies, and I didn't dig down much more than what, what I saw visually on that.
Okay.
So, so I wanted to let the board know that there's some kind of discrepancies going on. What I would suggest is that, you know, we do have part-time staff in the building office. I think it would be prudent if we looked at the possibility of having an outside inspector come in for the building permits, to make sure that what is being submitted is actually what's being constructed, and it's consistent with what's been permitted. So we're having a discontinuity between those various facets.
I'll, I'll, just one second. Go ahead, Bill. Do you have some more information, Bill?
No, the resolution, as I indicated, I know Larry's sixteen hours a week, and this project really warrants a full-time observer. And I think it would be prudent for the board to request the developer to support this as a service under the 53G account for inspectional services.
Okay.
How's, how's the square foot, it's, the square foot's right there, right?
I didn't look that closely at it, but I can tell you, the footprint of the buildings are larger than what was approved.
Elijah?
Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, the permits, the plans that were submitted to the building department are exactly what is being built on site. There's a difference and a discrepancy between the actual building set that was submitted to the town for approval, and what was submitted to the zoning board and part of the package ten years ago. And we made some changes, which were allowed under 40B, mostly aesthetic, that met what the current market was demanding, and one of them being a two-car garage. They are bigger by roughly 75 to 100 square feet, and that was to accommodate a slightly larger kitchen, to get a center island in, which is also market-driven. But the side separation, which was the most important thing at the zoning board hearings during the permitting process, was kept at the 31 feet. That's why they're five feet deeper in the back, but there's no width to the box itself.
Okay. I, I was emailed by Town Council a few weeks ago, saying there was no provision in the approval to vary from what was approved, whether it was the first set, first time around. So...
I built, this is my fourth 40B, and just like in a conventional subdivision, and you know as being a builder, you do make some aesthetic changes, and you move with the market and change with that. And 40B does allow that, as long as you don't do a substantial change, which they consider over 10% of the existing square foot that was permitted. And aesthetics really aren't brought into issue, as long as you're making the affordable unit from the exterior indistinguishable from the market rate.
So you're saying removal of farmer's porches and stuff?
As long as I do that to a market rate unit, I can do that throughout the project. And the farmer's porch wasn't deleted, it was shrunk on the two-car garage, but on the one-car garage, it is still there. You have a photo that doesn't show the porch is still on, that wasn't added yet.
Is that the, is that the stoof out front? Is that what you're calling the farmer's porch?
No, that's on the two-car garage. There is a coverage stoop, which the garage came over and ate up part of the porch. But on the one-car garage unit, the porch wasn't built yet.
Oh.
Yeah, but it is on, you can drive by.
So I'm a little confused, because my understanding is, this was built under the MOU, not 40B.
Well, it's a lit application, which falls under the state statute of 40B.
Unfortunately, we don't have the benefit of Town Council tonight, and...
Uncomfortable with what we did is allowed, but it is true that the size did change by close to 100 square feet, and we did add a two-car garage.
Did you tell anyone in the town that you were going to do that?
I, we, just like in any subdivision, I, I don't, you don't want to get every minute detail approved. I take building plans in, I have my building plans approved, they meet code, they meet my side setbacks, that's...
We don't have the benefit of the council, but again, he sent me an email, and he said, I think Bill was CC'd on that as well, saying that there was no provision for any changes to the buildings beyond what was approved. You know, you have a different take on it, unfortunately, we don't have counsel here. Mike?
Where's the plan for this house? Bill didn't bring it.
It's my understanding that the same set of drawings has been used for all the units that have been...
No, that is not true.
I'm just telling you what I've been told.
Do you have the other set of building plans?
I guess, I don't want to linger on this too long tonight. The point of me bringing this issue up is that I think this is an illustrative example of what might warrant a little more observation on some of the things that are going on. And I think it's not punitive, it's simply things that staff within the town hall doesn't have the hours allocated to accommodate this size project. So from my perspective, I would request through the board that the developer consider having, under the 53G account, provision, allowing us to utilize that money for an outside inspector to come in. And I'm not looking for a decision tonight, but we can send that request through the developer, and then maybe take it up at the next meeting.
Okay. Mike, did you have a question?
Bill, what's these, all these reds?
The reds are the affordable units.
Okay. So we have eight certificates of occupancies, we have 16 permits out. One, only one of the...
Twenty-four permits issued.
Only the, one of them is affordable? What's the plans for any of the other ones? Because we're supposed to be at a percentage point?
There are, how many affordables do we have under construction? Yes. Yeah. Oh, done one, we have five under construction.
We have five affordables under construction. We closed on our first one, that was the permit, the occupancy we just used.
Okay. I, I don't have that decision memorized, but I believe the four of the first 16?
Four of the first 16 need to be affordable.
Correct.
So we do have...
Four of the first 16 closings?
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
Is that, is that how it's?
It's on track.
Good, all right. Hey, what have you, Mike?
The, so you have only done one, since the last meeting, you only had one closing?
One closing on, yes.
I had asked Ed last time, did that information get conveyed on the bill for his little chart that he has to keep track of what's affordable and what's not? Because we, he wasn't getting that information.
I believe so.
Can you check into that, make sure?
Yeah, I can check this way, yeah.
It would just, it would just help to keep track. He, he's trying to find it on the registry of deeds, and it'd be a lot easier if he knew exactly that it was transferred, whether it's affordable or not.
Sure.
Anybody at the table have any questions for Bill or for Tim?
Counselor.
Well, I have, I have a, I have a question that doesn't have to do with the building. I took a ride up there a few days ago. Happened to be, I think it had rained. And you have standing water between each of the, each of your buildings?
Yes, that's by design.
By design, okay.
That is by design.
It's by design. Okay, looks odd.
It does.
They're going to be rain, once the plantings are in, they're rain guards.
Will be absorbed.
Yeah, so there's no traditional drainage system within the street and curving. It's called a low-impact design, so the road is humped in the middle, the water is shut off to the side of the street, kind of like the old days where you would have... would have a ditch, but instead of a ditch, you get a rain garden that collects the water. And then what overflows out of that goes back into a swale that's behind the whole project that delivers it out to a larger pond.
Okay, so, so, but meanwhile, if it's not, even if it's not raining, within a few hours, you're still going to have standing water, and that's okay?
That water is meant to infiltrate in the area where the water is distributed.
Okay.
It's a new design. It's supposed to be low-impact and put the water back where traditionally would...
This goes with all the stormwater regs and...
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's by design.
Do you have a certain type of soil up there? I mean, is it, if it were, I mean, the design is okay, unless it's clay soil.
The soils are good.
It meets, the soil meets all the criteria.
Okay, so it should be absorbing fairly?
Yes. It's supposed to meant to dissipate slowly like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim has a different take on it than Jay. So I personally think it would be his responsibility to prove to Jay that he's allowed to make changes to that. And then Jay can review it and give us some guidance. So if you can give some documentation to back up what you've said, if you can get it to Bill, we'll get it to town council. And again, he said that he was not aware of that, of any flexibility in the design from what was originally approved. So if you could get that documentation to Bill?
Sure.
He'll get it to town council, and hopefully we'll get that resolved.
Smooth things over.
Yeah, absolutely. It's my belief that the drawings that were submitted were concept drawings and that you may, can make changes within 10%. That's what we've done.
Yeah, if you could wherever get that documentation to back it up, because council wasn't aware of that.
Understood. Yeah? I'd be happy to talk to you.
All right. Thank you.
So what's, we're meeting with him now, we're going to meet in one?
Monthly.
So we're going to meet in September.
And we're going to do it monthly until there's other issues, the booster pump and...
Okay, so there's a fire suppression issue, whatever.
Right, right.
We have a final decision about the cure, and then my understanding is there's a couple of locations that we're looking for. Are you working on that end?
Right now, we are moving towards a fire cistern instead of upgrading the water main in North Street, and we are amendable to that. We think that's a great idea. That came from the chief. Location is to be determined, and size of tank is to be determined.
And numbers?
Numbers.
One or two, I mean, is it...
That has, yeah, that hasn't been, as of right now, we're talking about one 30,000-gallon tank in one central location, but that hasn't been decided yet. But there is a long lead time on the tanks, 10 to 12 weeks.
So you purchased these, they're made out of fiberglass?
Yes, I actually brought you.
Thank you. Oops.
Where else is it? Where else is it?
Bill?
Uh...
You got another one?
I got another one. We're not sharing again. On the first page is a bird's eye view of the project, and in, highlighted in blue is one of the locations being discussed for the location of the tank. The tank is 10 feet wide by 52 feet long, and it's buried 12 feet in the ground with two feet of cover on top. And then you have a line that goes out to the street, and it's basically like a hydrant. The fire department hooks up to it, and it holds 30,000 gallons of water. On the second page is just a blow-off of that location, just to show you who need, it's suggested we have 25 feet around the tank if it ever needs to be serviced. And highlighted in pink is the hydrant location and a paved area for the fire department to pull up to. The third page is a picture of a buried tank. This is our project, but it just shows you the different apparatuses. Yeah. 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 And then...
The intent is to have only one hydrant?
Well, at the, at the project now, there's 400 gallons per minute that's available with town water. This tank would give you 30,000 additional gallons, and the way the NFPA works it is they take the gallons you need and divide it by 30 minutes, and that's how they size a tank. So we would need to meet 750 gallons per minute with no hydrants, 22,000 gallons of water. So this would give you 30,000 gallons of water on top of the 400 gallons per minute that are already available at the hydrants.
So this will be owned by Town and Douglas, that's finished?
No, everything within the project will be owned by the homeowners association.
There is association.
Yep, and maintained by the homeowners association.
This is something you're working with the fire chief and...
With the fire chief, Bill, town engineer, the STAN-Tech, the towns, water and sewer engineer.
So I think at some point, because it's a significant change, we would have to vote on it. However, it would be, the vote would take place after recommendation from fire chief.
That's what I'm wondering is when all of the recommendations are going to come in.
And that's something we're working on. Pam, you know, we've been asking to nail down a schedule. I know we're looking at next week possibly getting everybody in a room and agreeing in concept, and then after that, concept is agreed, we'll get something a little more tangible submitted and we can comment on.
One final thing that I had rumbling around in my brain this week was, you have people living up there.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a homeowners association in effect at the moment?
There's a homeowners association, which we are the developer, the homeowners association, but yes, there is one in effect.
So you have written rules and regulations and whatever?
Yes, we do. Yep, yep, that's under mass law for any condominium project. Yeah, you gotta follow those guidelines.
Will the homeowners association be by phase? So if you move on to phase two and phase one's completed?
No.
No.
It will be till the very end.
So you'll be the homeowners association until...
Till it's completed?
No, it's, well, until 50% of you, it's a solar.
Okay.
And I think it's, I forget how, I'd have to defer to Ed.
I believe that's how it's handled. Mike?
Just curious, is this a standalone tank? You fill it up, not connected to the public water supply?
That's correct. But we are talking about connecting it to the water supply, because it's going to have a site gauge where you can tell how much water's in the tank. So it'll have a valve you can turn to go in and to fill it back up.
Backflow preventer and all that.
Yes, that would all have to be, yeah, that all has to be approved.
And that'll go through the design process.
Yes, that all has to be approved.
And that would fall, the maintenance of that would fall in the homeowners association.
Yes, that's correct.
And do you have any thoughts on, when Bill talked about a outside building official?
We've done that in other projects, and what we've done before is we get a reduced building permit fee, because the building official really isn't involved as much, and we get a reduced fee that just takes care of the...
Paperwork.
Paperwork, yeah. And then we pay out of the 53G account per visit for the building inspector, or whatever part they're doing, if they're reviewing the building permits, you know, that's taken into account. But yeah, we've done it before.
Okay.
So, you know, we'd be open to looking at that, and, you know, we need to get some, solicit some pricing from some vendors, so we know where we're at.
Maybe that's something we can talk about in our next, next month. And at least my plan is we would put this first on the agenda for the foreseeable future on a monthly basis, and then if we're all in agreement that we don't need to meet monthly any longer, we'll revisit that. So if you want to plan on the second Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM. And just good communication.
Absolutely. That's totally fine.
Make it easier, easier for everybody. It's never easy, but...
Yeah.
Great. Thank, Mike?
One other thing. All right, you can always leave. The, Ed had a milestone of five building permits that he wanted to achieve for October. And what did he say he needed to achieve to get the other two? Because we're going to get the next meeting, and then you're only one month away, so...
I think we talked, significant progress towards some of these issues had to occur to, to get more than three.
Yeah.
So it sounds like this water, fire suppression system is in the early stages, so we'll see where we stand on that next month, and we just want things to move, keep moving.
We do also, and we are going to require some more occupancies before this actually gets in the ground, so...
But I mean, if you're, you and other related departments are in agreement as to what has to be done, and maybe in agreement on a timeframe?
Yep.
That would show us progress.
Yep, we have a meeting set for Tuesday next week, and we hope to accomplish location and size, and hopefully we can get the cistern ordered.
Okay. Great. Anybody have anything else?
We're going to have to approve, I mean...
Have them make a determination whether or not this warrants a substantial change or not.
Yep.
And that will come after we get the proposal nailed down.
Okay.
Okay?
It could be voted in as an insubstantial change or a substantial change.
Correct.
But either way, it'll be a change to the memorandum of understanding, so we would have to add a new paragraph in.
Right, that's, that's my concern, right?
Either way, it needs to be approved.
Okay. Larry, did you have anything else? Okay, great. Mike?
I know, John.
He's still going.
How did the next proposed five COs, any of those affordable?
Not at this time, but they could be. We're going to finish another affordable unit, but we are in the process of finding more affordable buyers, which is not always an easy task, because the affordable buyer has to fit a certain criteria. So it's not just anybody can come in and buy one at an affordable rate. You have to make between 70 and 80% of the median income for the area, and then you have to get approved by monitoring and lottery agent. And a lot of times, we have gone through maybe 10 or 15 applicants, and so far, we've only been able to get one approved.
How do we meet the 25% on the first 16?
A lot, some, in other towns, the way I've done it is I build the affordable unit so it's ready, and I have an occupancy permit, so it's ready to be moved into, and then I can continue on selling the market rate units.
Yep.
So while we look for affordable buyers. But as long as we have them built and they're sitting there ready, that kind of meets the guideline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
September meeting, September, September 12.
Thank you, guys. Have a nice night.
You too.
I'll catch up. Next agenda item is case number 2018-11, David and Barbara Trichon, 122 Franklin Street.
Oh, you can say it.
It's allergies. No, it's not.
Hey.
Hey.
Hello. Since our last meeting, it was left off that we should have a certified plot plan done of our property, and that would use a lot of things. Well, we had that done, and I'd like to pass out some things here, some copies.
Thank you.
Which changes everything as far as our plans go. Um, you know, there's...
Yeah, thank you. Everybody got one? You got one?
I think we missed two. But you all sacrificed some.
All right, yeah. Two more.
Sorry.
What happens, they're going around, one more.
It's going to be out of paper soon.
So if we're looking at this, we were proposing to build on the, if you look at the private way and we consider that north, the east side of the house. We originally thought that there was 33 feet between the original house and the property line, because we had a tape survey that was done in 1985.
Exactly. It's like a piece of string.
Right, right. Well, I don't even think they used string. They might have just tied it. Only off by 16 feet. 10. 10? 10 feet. So we thought we had 33 feet. There's only 23 feet down that side, and which only leaves actually 17 and a half feet because of the mudroom that's, that's on there now. So the good side of that is that there's 10 extra feet on the other side of the house. So there's 51 feet on that side of the house, so we're going to have to go on that side, and we should be able to put our addition on that side without a variance even needing, you know, because you need a 25-foot setback, and we should be able to deal with, with the space that we have to not need the zoning approval for that.
However...
However, since we're here, since we're here, we touched on a farmer's porch in the original, in the original project, even though I forgot to write it into the actual description.
It's highlighted on the original.
It was on one of the drawings, and if you can see with the picture, the picture...
So this is the existing house right now?
The existing house.
As you can see. The structure above is what we've wanted to do with the farmer's porch and the two-car garage on the left-hand side. So omitting the two-car garage and the master suite on the left-hand side, we'd like to continue with the variance for the farmer's porch.
Shows that there's 37 feet. We have no actual frontage, because none of our land abuts Franklin Street, so it abuts a private way. Supposed to be 50 feet. We have 37 feet. We're hoping to be able to come out like six feet for farmer's porch, just for curbside appeal and aesthetics, and we're going to try to come in with a driveway on the other side of the house, and maybe we can have stairs going to either driveway, going to the front door. It would be just a nice way to tie it in. So basically, that's, that's why we're here.
The application, though, was for a two-car garage and...
It touched on the farmer's porch, and if you look at the original structure, we had highlighted the existing property and then what we wanted to do, and the farmer's porch was highlighted on that as well. So that's why we're, we know we can't do the garage and the bedroom above it. It's obvious. So we'll take care of applying for a permit to do that later on, but we wanted to try to move forward with at least the farmer's porch part, if we can.
Right. The problem is we advertise, your original proposal, if I remember correctly, was three feet from the property line. That's what was advertised in the paper, that's what...
Okay.
So I think you're going to have to start from scratch.
Okay. And that was a realization that we discussed.
We understand.
We just figured we, while we were here, we would ask, and, you know, it's not visible from the road.
It's legal notification, and we're really constrained by that. We have to let everybody know what's exactly what you're doing.
Sure.
We understand that.
And we knew we needed to come back, you know, at least with this, to say this is where it is, and we understand that we can't move forward with, you know, the original, so, you know.
Of course. Glad to... In other words, what you're doing is you're putting this porch, right? Correct. Right here.
Correct.
Not quite. Well, they, they're going to stay within the width of the house, so...
Straight across the front.
Well, that was... Just cut this off right here like this, like that. And you need a variance for that? Yeah. Because we're only 37 feet off the, off the right-of-way, and we're supposed, our frontage is supposed to be 50 feet. 37 feet. But the whole addition is going to the right side. How many houses on that right-of-way? Just mine.
Just one.
The actual halfway, halfway up the right-of-way, the neighbors utilized the right-of-way, and they built a big garage out behind their house, and they use, they use that for their half.
A paved driveway.
Correct. The top half is, yes.
They have a, they have a driveway on Franklin Street, but to access the barn, they use the right-of-way.
So in other words, they...
So, in other words, they own half this right of way, you own it.
From, correct. They, well, they use it from the street to about here, to about here.
And then we use it all the way down.
We're the only ones that use it down here.
Yeah, but you want, you want half the right of way.
Oh, well, we don't know whether, I don't know whether we own, they own that.
I know where he's going with this because it added a lot more footage to your offset in the front if you want the right of way.
If you own the middle of the right of way, right?
Right.
Usually, yeah, usually they take right of ways and they put them right down, split them right down the middle.
There's only two people on it, right?
Technically, yes.
So, what they do is usually split it. And if they did split that, would you have enough with other variance?
I don't think it's ten feet. I don't think it was ten feet. I don't think the road was ten feet wide, is it? Yeah, it's not. Now, the people were discussing, now, this is Franklin Street, obviously.
Right.
These people on the left-hand side are on the other side, right?
Correct.
Just for clarification, that's all.
Is this farmer's porch gonna go down the backside of your house as well?
Technically, in a perfect world.
That was another question I was gonna ask. But because, because the mudroom extends out six feet on that side already.
Could we attach?
Could we, could we build out and not go beyond that? Because it wouldn't encroach any, any closer to the sideline.
Well, you, you're still within, you're less than twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, you would have to file, if you're gonna go down the side of the house and across the front, you'd have to file for relief from the front setback and the side yard setback. Or rear, let's see how that.
That's fine.
You filed the both and then you can do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's, we have a meeting, we have a meeting on Friday.
If you, I think probably your best bet would be to withdraw this application because it was three feet from the lot line and.
Yeah, no, that's totally understandable.
Start over. And if you have, you obviously have a, now have a engineered plan here.
Right.
Right.
And if you came in and showed what you wanted, drew it on here, what you wanted to do with a set of plans.
Correct.
So, we can review that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We don't have an issue with that at all.
Okay, great. So, if you could even handwrite a request for withdrawal.
Okay.
And then we can vote on it and, it sounds like we'll see you in the near future.
On a piece of paper right now?
Yep.
On the back of something.
This is a request for withdrawal.
Case number's two zero one eight dash eleven.
That's it?
Just, yep, you wanna withdraw your application for variance for.
Today's date, P. Eighty-eight.
Boards, reference today's date, case two zero one eight dash eleven, David and Barbara Tricon, request a withdrawal from the zoning board. You will probably request a withdrawal from your application for a variance.
Okay.
That's, that's fine.
I didn't put variance, I just put application.
Okay, so we have the applicant requesting a withdrawal from the variance application.
I'm hoping that we accept the withdrawal request.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes to accept the applicant's request for withdrawal, seconded by Mr. Vembora. Who in favor?
Aye.
And you decided to do that, I'm sure Larry will work with you to get all the documentation that's needed. And we do need a set of plans when you do come back.
Yep, that makes sense.
Yep, that's fine. See where that takes us.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Have a good day.
The next agenda item is case number two zero one eight dash twelve. It's a public hearing for Robert and Diane Miller, one fifteen Shore Road. Date of the application is July eighteenth. Marie, did we get the, I just said nail that?
Yes, they're in your, I'm carpet employer, they're in your folder.
Okay.
Both of them.
Thank you.
Yep.
This application was posted in the town hall and also advertised in the Worcester Telegram Gazette on July twenty-fifth and August first. And it read as follows. The Town of Douglas zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at seven forty-five on Wednesday, August eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. In the Douglas Municipal Center, Community Meeting Room, twenty-nine Depot Street. To hear the application of Robert and Diane Miller are requesting a special permit in a rural agricultural RA zone district. Pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, section three point four point five, non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures. And appendix B dimensional regulations to allow the construction of a new single-family dwelling on a lot. Where a pre-existing family dwelling is currently located. The existing dwelling will be removed and a new dwelling will be constructed. When property located at one fifteen Shore Road assesses map three hundred, parcel thirteen. I think you're the boarder on this one too, though. Your name's on your boarder's list.
Chairman, take a nap.
Can we just wheel them up?
Sort of out of order. Out, this, this particular application slightly confuses me. Only in that it references Lieutenant Governor Palito, former Lieutenant Governor Tim Murray. Louis, who was gonna assume is Louis DiCino, and somebody identified as Ruth. And I guess I'm just confused as to why these particular individuals or political entities or people are being brought in. In terms of our assessment of the special permit.
Okay, basically, it was in regards to the five questions. And it said to detail the answers on those. And basically, what I was trying to do is show that there's things that I can do to help the town in terms of bringing in more business.
So, just so I understand, you're referencing Lieutenant Governor Palito's name because your personal relationship with.
No, no.
That is, I misunderstood, I apologize.
No, she is from Shrewsbury and just like Tim Murray, okay, who brought in the railroad from Boston. It's a matter of making those kind of connections and getting that kind of pull to bring business into Doug, into Douglas.
So, it's expressing your best intent to get these individuals to participate in the town.
Oh, absolutely.
Above and beyond whatever they.
Right.
Not that there is some sort of a quid pro quo.
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your support, Chairman.
You're welcome. The public hearing is now open. If you should identify yourself for the minute taker and.
Yes, my name's Bob Miller and I live in Sutton, Mass., eight Indian Hill Drive. And I own the property on one fifteen Shore Road. And I do have my engineer and architect joining me at eight thirty.
At eight thirty?
Right.
That's not good.
I was told the meeting was at eight thirty.
Seven forty-five. It was advertised at seven forty-five.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, well, comfortable making a presentation yourself?
Sure. Basically, what we're looking to do, I'll give you a little history of myself. I donated a kidney twenty-three years ago to my sister and ended up with a stroke. It affects my balance at night. In the last three years, it affects my balance at night and during the day. So, what we're trying to do is relocate into Douglas, sell our home in Sutton. And create a home on one level that we can live in. And the house design was put together by an architect. We had some concerns with the two neighbors we have. And what I asked him to do was create two wings on the property towards the lake. So that it would obscure the view to the neighbor's back property and they wouldn't necessarily have a view of us. And also deflect the sound and voice out to the lake as opposed to directly into their backyard. So, he did a good job, good job of designing the two wings and also pulling the deck in towards the house more. So that it helps deflect that sound. What it does is it gives both neighbors more privacy. And we're also looking at pulling the house away from the neighbor on the left as you look at the house. Right now, we're ten feet away from the property line with the wing approximately, let's see, sixteen feet wide. It puts our deck back and it obscures the view and also the noise transmission and voice transmission to the neighbors.
Do you have, other than this plot plan, do you have a house design or something?
Yes. This gives you a little idea. What I asked the architect to try to do was create a one-story look. There's a copy of the floor and also.
Have you been to the conservation commission?
Yes, they have approved it. As a matter of fact, they approved a larger design. But we've taken, shrunk it down based on Bob Parent's meeting. We originally had twelve-foot offsets. We went to fifteen and we're actually keeping the house at sixteen feet. So that if we have a gutter or a hangover, we're not encroaching on the fifteen-foot offsets. So, we're asking for fifteen-foot offsets on the two sides. So, we're pulling the house and centering it more on the lot. So, as you can see from the floor plan, the problem we have today is the deck is right straight across. We can look into both the back neighbor's yards and plus, you know, we can hear conversations. They can hear our conversations. What this design does, it allows us to sit on the deck and noise or voices would actually carry across the water as opposed to their backyard. That's what the wing design does and also setting the deck back into the house.
So, we all know where we can go to listen to what you're talking about?
Yeah. Yeah.
It does happen.
Well, you know, it's amazing how much the voices carry across the lake.
Yeah.
Fishermen can be fishing, just talking in a normal voice and you can hear them from like quarter of a mile away.
It says you have an existing septic. Is that capable of handling your new home?
Yes, it's designed and installed for four bedrooms.
Was that upgraded by someone else new? Is that, all right, wait a minute.
The septic is?
No, I took a ride down there the other day. Is that new?
Is that new?
Yeah.
The septic is new, not, no. It's a four-bedroom, leach-filled, gravity-fed to the new house.
Okay.
And in attending some of the previous meetings, to answer some of the questions, by going with the fifteen-foot offset and actually putting the foundation at sixteen feet. I have heavy construction equipment. We can get down the side if we have to. If we have to get a well drilling rig in there to go deeper or something of that nature. Over the road equipment is no more than eight and a half feet. So, the fifteen feet, sixteen feet is plenty to get excavators or triaxles down and back. Not that there's any reason. We have an artesian well already in there.
Mike?
This isn't for this.
Yes. It's similar. The architect hasn't done the full plan.
This has a full covered porch?
No, no. The front, I'm sorry, the farmer's porch is going to be eliminated. And the reason for eliminating the farmer's porch is so that we can take advantage of the full width of the house. Farmer's porch would add another four feet or so to it.
Yeah, because this elevation doesn't match the, this floor plan at all.
Right. The intent of this drawing here, okay, is to show the roof line of the second story. These dormers will probably be a little bit smaller, but it gives the appearance of a single-story building from the street.
Just so you know, we require a copy of what you're gonna build, exactly what you're gonna build.
Okay.
So, if that's available.
No, it costs approximately twelve thousand dollars to have the complete set of plans built with the stretch energy code. We're willing to do that, okay, but we need to agree on a footprint for the foundation with which to do the design.
Which came first?
Yeah, this is.
Well, I think it's ours, what comes first.
I've looked at over a thousand different floor plans out of catalogs, but nothing actually fits and nothing takes care of the sound problem onto the lot because of the constraints we have. So, we had to hire an architect to basically get it to fit on the lot, meet all the requirements.
Mike?
Yeah, I don't think we need a full set of plans. Just elevation pitches with the floor plan. We don't, we don't need a full set of building.
Well, I mean, if there's jogs or whatever.
I know, but elevation and floor plan is gonna show you that. Because this thing here shows three dormers on the front. This just has a bump out on one side.
Right.
And with a reverse cable, I would assume going, going back.
I'd like to have something to reference to.
Yeah, an elevation pitch is what I'm getting at. He made reference to stretch energy codes and things like that. We don't need that. We need elevation pitches in the floor plan.
Something that's exactly what you're gonna build, not something that's close to what you're gonna build.
Yeah, if the, if we can agree on the foundation plan, you know, we could go forward and do the full set of plans.
We can't do that. We have to have the plans, everything at one time. We need to look at everything at the time. We can't just, you know, just say, piecemeal, saying, okay, the foundation's okay, now what are you gonna put on it? We're not gonna do that. As the chairman just said to you, we need a set of plans to approve this.
With the elevation?
Yes.
But you don't need structural plans in terms of floor choices and ceiling.
No, that's the building inspector's.
That's the building inspector's job, not us. We need to know what, exactly what you're building and where it's gonna go on the land. You're saying here, you're looking for a, you're increasing the setbacks on one side from ten to sixteen, but you're approaching on the other side, you're at sixteen. This is what I'm saying. You need to have all this on plans and of course, it has to be an engineered standpoint.
The structural part of it is the building inspector. We just want something that we can reference in a decision. So that we, we're in agreement. You're gonna build a two-story home, not a three-story home or whatever. You're gonna build something with a two-car garage and whatever.
Okay.
You know, we just want that, that type of detail, not, not structural details.
I don't care how many windows.
Oh, as a matter of fact, here's my engineer now. Ralph, are you joining us? Ralph can address the elevations. This one is actually stamped.
Oh, the stamped one.
How many did you bring?
We get you.
Some of the concerns they have is the elevation on the front. Basically, we're at one oh two for the foundation height and not exceeding thirty-five feet in terms of height.
The average grade, we can submit that. I mean, we're not gonna exceed the average grade anyway. I mean, we'll calculate the height, building height from the ridge to the average grade around the building and we're not gonna exceed that. and we're not gonna exceed that.
Yeah, we just need some documentation to, to show that. So we can reference that in a decision and say, this is what's gonna be built. It's twenty-seven feet tall, it's sixty feet long, whatever the case may be. So, we're looking for that type of detail that we would include in, in a decision. Mike?
Just for clarification, um, you submitted this front elevation, and that's clearly not this house.
Right, and there's no farmer's porch.
We're gonna get you, we're gonna bring some testing plans that show all the elevations.
Looking for an elevation picture of the house.
No problem.
So you understand, sir?
Yes.
So if you'd like, we can continue this next month. Give you time to get a, a plan that you can include as part of your presentation.
Okay.
See where it takes us.
All right. So we'll give you elevations relative to the street, and, uh, basically, uh, an idea of what the front looks like with all these elevations on that also?
Exactly. I mean, I, I don't know if your plan's gonna be exactly like this. If it's not, we need a plot plan that's gonna show us exactly what the foundation's gonna be, so we can...
So, I mean, actually, the, the reason for our variance request, I mean, it's just for the front setback and the side setback. But the elevations, we will have to confirm with the building inspector regarding the elevation. I mean, the house, when, when the ten are submitted to the building, it's looking for approval. They will have to confirm with the height requirements.
Mm-hmm.
But the only one we're requesting from the zoning board is front setback and side setbacks.
But it's our policy to just have a plan as part of the approval. Mike?
All we're looking for is the front elevation. Side elevation.
And you need the average grade around the building and the revision above the average grade?
No, the building inspector will enforce that.
Yep.
Just need to know what the building's gonna look like. He presented this building, and it's not this building.
Yeah, no, it has the front.
Okay. All right, that's just what, what, in the past, we've had people come in and they, they fail to... They say they're gonna build a house. They wanna build a house forty feet from the lot line, and we approve that, and then they go and put a deck on. And then they're not forty feet from the lot line, they're now...
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah, but this would be enforced by the zoning enforcement officer.
Right, but he has to have something to, to enforce.
Out of a decision.
All right.
Is there anybody in the audience that wanted, in the room that wanted to speak on this application?
I'm Jean Lawrence, I'm two doors down, and I'm here mostly just 'cause I'm curious. So I didn't actually understand, um, the setback in the front would change, is that what it is?
I'm sorry, just stand, and, and just to state your name and address, so we can...
Hi, I'm Jean Lawrence, I'm at 119, a couple doors down. I'm here mostly just 'cause I was curious, about the processes and... But I didn't, like, from the conversation, I didn't understand what would be the, what would be the, um, barriers to be requested? Make sure it's closer to the road, or closer to the other house, or what is more, what's being requested?
Yeah. I'm sure Mr. Holland has, uh, some documents that might help you.
I mean, I can answer that later if you like.
Yeah, well, we're gonna continue this, so...
Yeah.
So, when you get that foundation plan on this, we just, this is the things that we're gonna enforce. We're gonna, if it was granted, it's gonna be, you're gonna have to be sixteen feet from the lot line or more. You know, fifteen-six is gonna bring you back to this room.
Yes.
So, and that has happened in the past where people have failed, oh, well, I had a bumpout, but...
Yeah, there will be an S built, and it will show the exact foundation from the setbacks.
All right, um, so, the seven, seven-thirty?
Yeah, seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty on September...
Twelve.
Twelve.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna wonder if we continue it?
Yes, yes.
Continue this, uh, to the public hearing? Case number two zero one eight.
One second, sir. We have a motion by Mrs. Holmes to continue, Mrs. Holmes to continue the public hearing to our September meeting at seven-thirty. Okay.
Yes, so we don't need a, we don't need a ninety days after the close.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue to our September twelfth meeting at seven-thirty by Mrs. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll see you on the twelfth. Thank you.
Excuse me, you said September twelve?
Yes.
Okay.
At seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty.
Now, can I sit on this one?
Yes, you can. Maybe, I don't know.
You really want a lot of time, though.
Let's check, Louis.
Well, we vote on it.
Has he been behaving yourself over there?
Okay, the next agenda item is, um, public hearing. Dan Dudley is requesting to appeal the building inspector, building commissioners' enforcement orders dated June first, 2018, and June fifteenth, 2018 pursuant to Chapter Forty-Eight, Section Seven, on property located at one sixty Wallace Street, assessors map one fifty-eight, parcel nineteen. That announcement was posted in the town hall and published in Worcester Telegram Gazette on July twenty-fifth, and again on August first. Voting on this case will be, um, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mrs. Holmes, myself, Mr. Holland, and Mr. Bombara. The applicant or his representative?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You did just send me. If you were, if you were paying attention, you saw me earlier.
I thought you'd done that so much, I thought you were the new member.
But this is where that bridge goes across, over the slim bridge.
Mm-hmm.
I was just inquiring as to whether or not, in looking at Google Map, if this area is where the slim bridge runs across.
The斜way.
The斜way. The slim bridge was a very slim bridge.
Okay, Mr. Lane, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Uh, Henry Lane here, on behalf of, uh, Mr. Dudley. Uh, I'll make this very brief, because, you know, it's been a long night already. Three things, basically. First of all, um, we need a little more time to get our act together, I guess. There's a lot of questions here. Exactly when some of these buildings were built, we've done some research. We have a little more research to do. Uh, there's some question about exactly where the property line is. I know there's been a survey done recently. We haven't seen that survey, so we don't know exactly what the relationship is between the property line and these buildings. So we'd like to get that clarified before we go forward, 'cause otherwise, we're just kind of wandering around in, in the darkness, shall we say. So, you know, rather than doing half a presentation, knowing that we can't complete it, it just seems to make more sense to sort of put this over a month, and hopefully we'll have a better, a better sense of what's going on. And maybe we can resolve it before then, but in any event, it, it doesn't seem like we can make any real progress tonight. So, we are gonna ask that it be continued. Secondly, um, I, I know that the board's policy has typically been, and it's a good policy that they like to see the sites, uh, you know, that are gonna be discussed at the various hearings. Unfortunately, this is, you know, this is somebody's home, you know? And, uh, we'd really appreciate it if, if board members individually or as a group would let us know if they're going to come to the property, so that we don't have people wandering around and, you know, we end up calling the police 'cause we don't know who they are. So, um, you know, if you haven't been there yet, uh, and you'd like to go to the property, please let us know so that, uh, we can expect you. We won't be serving refreshments.
We call you, or we call...
You can call me, you can call Mr. Dudley, but, you know, as long as we know, so that we don't have people wandering around there, and, you know. Some of you may or may not know that we had an incident where we actually did call the police in the last couple of days, 'cause there was a board member out there. So, you know, no, no harm, but nevertheless, it's just uncomfortable to have people wandering around in your yard.
When would it be expected?
What's that?
Would it be expected if you applied?
No, I'll, I'll tell you, you know, I work with dozens of boards, okay? And most boards go, you know, they arrange a visit. If they're gonna do a site visit, they'll pick a time and a date, and they'll let you know, this is the time and the date we're gonna be there. That what, we can be there, and we can sort of say, here's what you're looking at.
In all fairness, I, I've never even heard it come up since I've been on here since, uh, 2013. And I've never, I've never asked permission.
I've walked every site that this board has heard in the last eleven years without any issues. Every site in eleven years.
I understand, every town does it differently. And we have no problem with, you know, I mean, I think it's, it's always nice to see that the town, board members have enough interest that they actually do go do the site visit and see it.
I'm not sure how you make a decision without doing that, whatever.
Well, but, but the thing is, see, there's, there's different ways of doing this. If you're doing a drive-by and you're on the public street, that's one thing. If you actually come onto the property, that's a whole different deal. You know, and, and we're, we're basically saying, look, if you wanna see the site, we're not trying to hide it, okay? We just wanna know, so that we don't call the police because we see people walking around in the yard.
Maria, do we have a phone number to reach the Hall owner?
He's sitting right there.
Oh, I, I just didn't know whether we have a phone number on file.
I, I'm willing to give anyone my phone number, my email address.
Okay.
What if we did, we do it as a group? What if we just do it as a group?
I guess we could.
Uh, if I could just, could I say something?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, uh, back when I first got on, there was a, I ran across a incident where I was a little uncomfortable. Uh, the, the property that I was inspecting was down a dirt road. And I, I drove down the dirt road, and then, like, probably the husband came home from work. And of course, he passes me, and I'm going, he doesn't even know that I'm here, why I'm here. And I suggested to the board, um, that we put, uh, on the applications, uh, notification to the parties who make any application to the zoning board in Douglas, that if you make this application, uh, be advised that, that, that the members will need to come on your property. And, um, you know, if, 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 if different people would like to be notified before that happens, that's certainly fine. But they, that, but, but I intend to make sure that gets put on our, our applications from now on.
You don't think that that would amount to some sort of small time taking? Mr. Lane, possibly four, five hundred dollars worth of value?
This particular application, to simplify it, I, I think if I had a plot plan showing the size and location of the structures in, in question, I don't need to go there. But I don't have anything other than driving to the property and looking.
And you don't have anything because we don't have anything. We don't have anything because...
I, I actually went to the property, and it, the lot line staked out. I don't know by who, what, engineering firm, whatever, but it is clearly staked out.
And is the building on the other side of the property line?
Yes.
They gotta be moved.
So, let's not make the decision before we have the hearing, okay?
Oh, sorry.
He's not voting on it, so he doesn't want to...
Visit the site as a group?
He's just making a comment.
Would you like to visit the site as a group?
If you need me to go, I'll go. I just need to see a plot plan showing where the structure is. Because if we don't have a certified plot plan, and, oh, we have stakes out there, and we don't know who put the stakes in, who's to say if we're in his yard, the neighbor's yard, or whose yard we're in? So, I would like to have something with a little stamp on it that shows me where the structure is and what side it is.
Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak on this case?
Uh, my name is Pat Pollard, and this is my wife Diane. Um, we are the Butters of Dan Dudley's property. And, um, we had the survey done, um, shortly after we purchased the, the property at Six Shady Lane. Um, I would do that normally for every house that I've owned. I've only owned three homes in my life. Um, one was our starter home in New York, when we started out, when we got married. And, uh, the second home was, um, in Uxbridge, and we had been there for twenty-six years, almost. Um, and we also had a, a survey done, 'cause I wanted to make sure that whatever I did and wherever I placed a shed, or, um, that I made sure that I went down and pulled a permit, and made sure that I staked out the offsets, and I had to make sure that, uh, the, the structures were inspected and measured to make sure that they were not placed. 'Cause I didn't wanna be in violation and have someone come back to me later on or have a mess in my hands. And I also wanted to know, you know, what, what was, you know, on either side of me as well, right? Um, so, I did the same exact thing. Um, in retrospect, I really wish I had done it before I bought the property, um, which is a, uh, an unfortunate set of circumstances that got revealed. Um, this is my copy of the survey, and it shows my side of the, um, the Butters' property line. And it shows the, to the extent of where some of the things that, um, are now established as encroaching over the property line. Um, now, uh, that particular survey was at pretty great expense, because it is such a large piece of property. Um, and actually, I had them come back because they failed to actually note, um, all of the encroachments and the exact locations of the encroachments. So I had to pay an additional fee to have the crew come back out from Andrews and actually set that, um, into the, the current plan. Um, I'd be happy to lay it out on the table if you wanna take a look at it. Um, I will say that I, I'm not, um, inclined to be sharing this with Attorney Lane or with my neighbor at this point, because, um, personally, I feel like, um, and this is, has nothing to do with this particular case, but we're, I, I get the feeling that we're, we're being bullied. Um, you know, it had this, you know, so, I'll just leave it at that. Um, so if you would like to see it, um, I'll lay it out on the table for you now.
Okay.
And that's it.
Sure.
You know, if, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, you know, I know Mr. Pollard's got an attorney who is not here. Uh, if we're gonna be sharing documents, we're gonna get copies of them. Because if you're not...
I'm gonna sit down, sir.
Well, that would be between you guys.
No, you're just gonna show it.
You can show it.
We're not gonna show exhibits, that we're not gonna get copies of. It's just not gonna happen. We're gonna subpoena those documents to the next hearing.
Attorney Lane, I would suggest that, you suggest that your client...
You need to direct all your questions to the attorney.
I, I would suggest then, very strongly, that, um, that the, the person that's involved with this issue, go ahead and contract a survey company to come in and do the survey, so that you have the proper documentation to make the decisions that you need to make, based upon that.
Can you?
And I think that would be a, probably a smart thing to do, and probably highly suggested, because, you know, I mean, you know, one survey company could come back and, you know, maybe, could be inches, could be feet, you don't know. You know, um, I did believe that I chose a, a reputable survey company to be able to do that. Um, and, you know, if I was in that situation, I personally would probably go ahead and have my own survey done. But that's not my decision. So that's my, that, that's my...
That may come up at another meeting, that, that would be a requirement of...
I have no idea. So, I'm gonna sit down.
Well, I just wanted to be clear, as soon as that plan gets shown, it's a public record, and we get a copy of it.
Okay.
So if he doesn't want us to get a copy, he can't present it. I just wanna be clear about that.
Yeah, it's fine. Larry, are there any, uh, building permits on file for these buildings that are in question?
No. No permits on file for any of those. There are also, excuse me, um, the assessors' map shows no accessory structures.
Mike?
I, I think, I think it's up to, uh, the applicant to get us a certified plot plan showing where this is, so then we can make a determination as to who's responsible for getting rid of the shed. If the shed's in his yard, then it's clearly his property, I would think. Um, and then it would be his responsibility.
Well, we'd certainly recommend that to the applicant now, so...
Well, you know, it's just kind of a chicken and egg question. You gotta understand, this is an appeal. It's the building inspector who's alleging that there's a violation. So if you're looking at it from that point of view, I think we can ask the building inspector, and what does he base his determination? Because he's the one who says we're in violation. I don't know what he's basing that on.
Larry, you wanna address that?
Sure, I've been on Mr. Pollard's property and saw the stakes that were supplied by Andrews Engineering. They clearly are, the, uh, one shed, garage, clearly intersects Pollard's property. The other, um, buildings on the, uh, property, the other garage, has not been permitted. So, again, that's a violation of his own files.
So, how, how many buildings are there, Larry, that are, um, that are in question?
Well, there's two garages, and I don't really count the, uh, there's a tent. And I don't really count the, there's a tent thing too.
Yeah, temporary structure.
Yeah. There's also kind of a dog run or something, but that's so small too that somebody could pick it up and move it if they wanted to.
Mike?
I went on the G I S just before the meeting, and I printed out the property.
You had it when you...
Yeah, no, but I printed it out myself.
Okay.
Where are the buildings?
Two houses.
Is it one of these two?
No, those are two houses.
So, it doesn't even show them on the assessor's?
The assessors weren't known, building permits were never on.
Actually, we have the assessors' records from back from 1980 that show these structures. One of the structures already, the assessors have them on their records.
So, these two houses here? So, I'm comfortable that the building inspector made his decision based on a professional survey as markings.
Well, as I say...
I think the easiest way to clarify it is to get us a plot plan showing where these structures are and then we go from there. If we can't go on the property, and we can't, we don't have a map.
What were you contemplating doing between now and, I guess, wanting to continue it?
Well, the first thing I'd like to do is get a copy of the survey. Okay. I mean, we knew the survey was done, we asked for a copy of it, we haven't received it. I haven't, I wasn't officially told I wasn't going to get a copy. And we'll bring in the copy so we'll actually know where the structures are in relationship to the lot line. And the second thing we were looking for is we found some records, as I say, we found the assessors' records back to 1980 showing that the structure was already there. We're still looking for documentation on the other structures. Because if you've read the application, you understand that zoning violations have a statute of limitations, which is at most ten years. Six years if there's a building permit, ten years if there isn't. These buildings, this building has been here for thirty-eight years, so we know that's well beyond the statute of limitations. And we'll be asking you to overturn the building inspector's decision because you don't have the enforcement power after ten years.
That's one building.
The second one, we're still researching, we haven't found all the records. So, you know, until we have a good survey and we have all our records, we're just sort of talking.
Okay.
Well, excuse me, but, Mr. Lane, isn't it so that if you build a building, if it's a hundred years and you build it on the wrong lot, the person that owns that lot, okay, owns that building? I mean, that law you're saying, that five- and ten-year theory, I mean, that's great in the court. I've used that on you. And I'm going to tell you...
Well, has it gotten you anywhere?
Yeah, of course I have. And let me tell you something, you know, it's amazing, the guy still owns the property. And he finds out that, hey, these two buildings are on my property. Doesn't matter about, doesn't matter about how many years, he's good dogs.
Actually, you're getting beyond yourself. The question of who owns the property...
I think we need to stay focused on this case.
Continue the hearing. A plot plan showing where these structures are.
I do, I do too.
I'm not sure if it's fair that the Butter has...
I'm comfortable with the building inspector's decision to go by a professional engineer that surveyed it, did it. And I think the burden is on you to prove otherwise.
Mm-hmm, there you go.
As I say, we hope that we can produce the evidence that we need, and we're asking...
Through a stamp plan.
I think, actually, Sean already made a motion, and I seconded it.
Yeah, I just, there was one, Mr. Dudley, you wanted to speak earlier, do you still?
Uh, it was more of a personal nature, but I did want to mention, Attorney Lane's already mentioned that the structure, another structure that is Patrick's objection. The building was purchased by my mother in the late seventies from Bill Carter for my father for present. And there was no knowledge of exactly where the property line was. No one intentionally tried to put it, as Patrick said, on somebody else's land. I think that was rather demeaning, that comment that he made of my father. And I take affront to that.
Well, if you can get us a certified plot plan showing that it's not on his property, we'll go from there. So, why don't we continue?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We have a motion by Mr. Holland...
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Holmes to continue this hearing until September 12th at...
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five. Thank you. Thank you. Hold all the favor.
Hi. Excuse me.
I know.
You know, down where my, they sold that building down on, down on Route sixteen, where we had people taking cars apart. Yeah, taking cars apart. So, anyways, I put a fence up there, right? Because the other guy had it, was putting cars on my property, you know? So, Wiston was his lawyer, so Wiston called me up and said, Louis, you have to move that fence two feet. I said, no, Tom, not two feet. You're on my client's property. I said, no, you tell your client he owns the fence.
All right. Why don't we do the... A June meeting.
I didn't know it was two houses.
I think everybody was hoping they'd...
Two garages. They're talking about the house that was built, not that, that, the garage.
It's really hot in here.
No, we have a hot place.
I'm in shorts. I understand.
Just another attorney in the room when he gets a call.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I have to make a comment. I'll be honest, when you guys said you just walked into the property, I call and I say that, I'm serious. I call and I say...
Maria, can we, oh, we should discuss that. There's a...
Is there a clarification? Can we go see this, or we have to all come up with a plan?
Well, we're going to, I guess we can go.
I think without any plot plan, you're kind of wasting your time.
You're wasting time.
Yeah, you're just looking at a building in the middle of a lot.
But how does the board feel about making, putting that question that in applying here, you are...
I'm against subject to...
You're giving permission, I give permission to the board to come on my property.
I'm against it.
Yeah, I would say put it right in the checkbook.
Why?
What right do you have to tell me that if I want to participate in town government, I have to give up incidents in my real estate?
Point taken. And I feel the same, I feel the same way about that with Conservation Commission, I'm sorry.
Who are you to do that?
Exactly.
How do you make an informed decision without...
Well, that's a different issue.
We know that people...
If you, as the applicant, choose to not allow us onto your property to look at it, then we can only make a decision based upon the information that we had. So, it's probably in your interest to allow us to go on. But to say that you give up an incidence of ownership of your real estate...
We can phrase the question, I do or I do not permit...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Give them the two options, it's their option.
Oh, yeah.
And then, as far as I'm concerned, every time that a site visit is done, it's to the benefit of the applicant.
Absolutely.
Like I said, I've gone every single time, made a phone call. I happen to, I mean, I happen to live near this guy.
Yeah, me too.
I walk by where he's seen this stuff. So, but what's funny is I'll leave a message within fifteen minutes, I can call back. Yeah, you can come on. I usually say it's like a black GMC pickup truck, could be any day of the week.
He's got two free houses.
Yep.
That's what he's got.
Anyway.
If they put it on there as a question...
That's fine.
I do or I do not permit Z B A members to enter my property to view my application. If they do not, then we don't know.
So, he doesn't have to...
We will be forced to...
Right.
Depending upon the information that we have, making it clear that that's a fact. I just think saying somebody has to give up their authority to control their property.
I agree.
I had, there was an issue with Conservation.
Let's try to stay focused.
Yeah, this is the plan, this is the plan.
You want to come down? Yep. No, I understand it though, because I was like, wow, I was really upset.
Will you bring us to order so that we can move on?
All dependent if he enters a second.
I'll move that we accept the minutes of June thirteenth.
Well, he said that...
We need to continue the meeting, we can't have these private conversations going on on the table.
Sorry.
So, is the boards, are we in agreement that on the applications, we will type something in saying, I do or I do not permit the Z B A members to visit my site for the purpose of viewing...
Yeah, they know their feeling.
Right. If they say no, we don't go. If they say yes, we do.
Yeah. I'm agreeing with that, yes.
I think a prefaced sentence saying that in order to adjudicate your request, we would like to look at your property.
I'd have some...
Do you have permission or not?
Pam, and give it to...
Would you be willing to do that, Joe?
I don't know, but I'll do it right now, but sure.
Yeah, okay. If you could do that and send it to Maria, and then we'll review it at the next meeting. And then we'll make it a part of every application.
Throw it on the application.
You're not getting paid for this, by the way, so...
Except that I'm not going to...
He's not going to sign it.
Why do I just, I just think this is... I don't want to say that too loudly.
If you could do that, then we can review it at the next meeting, and then we'll make it part of every application. If people don't want us on their property...
Good idea.
That's it, that's the...
It's an idea.
Absolutely. Am I right or am I wrong?
So, we're reviewing the minutes of June...
I move that we accept the minutes of June thirteenth as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Holmes to, and seconded by Mr. Bombara, to approve the minutes of June thirteenth, 2018, as written. Hold the favor. And we also have the minutes for the July meeting.
Can you read those?
I have to read them. Jeez. It's your turn.
Well, we have several other things on the agenda.
Yes.
Would you like time to read them, and we'll deal with them next month?
Read them, what, these?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll continue the review of the July minutes till September meeting.
You know, I drove up and I purchased gas, and the gas tent was incredibly rude to me. Someone can't stall him.
Oh, okay. All right. We just got these, because we meet monthly. There is an application here that the planning board is looking for a recommendation from the zoning board. We have a party who's proposing a residential compound subdivision at 202-206 Maple Street in Douglas. And they're requesting their comments by tomorrow.
Wait a minute, let me buzz through that.
May I? So, how many of the, look in the bill, you don't even know that, right?
We just got it. There also is a request on the planning board to review and comment on a gravel pit operation on the estate of Harry Bedouin's property by pine, sand, and gravel. And it looks like they're requesting for the comments by July second.
July second?
July second?
Of 2018?
Of 2018.
2018.
Did they already make their own...
No, no, let's continue, they're going to be meeting it next week, yeah.
Yeah, they're meeting next week, so...
Do you want to review it?
Yeah, Mike, there you go.
And then we have an old favorite here.
Oh, yeah.
The planning board's looking for a comment to review the application for New One Realty Ventures to have a drive-up window, seventy-four Main Street. This is what they submitted.
I spoke to Chairman of the planning board...
Oh, Duncan Donuts.
Last week. And all the stuff that we were talking about when they were here is exactly what they're doing. I don't know if you ever watched the TV, but they were pretty persistent, it's like moving a ball. What happens if tractor trailers come in? They didn't have provisions for that, that kind of thing. There's going to be a given take. Right now, they're not giving anything, the owners. So, there was, I think, three lawyers and an engineer and a traffic study person, that was...
Maria, it's reasonable to assume that there will be no vote on this by the planning board at the next meeting?
At the planning board meeting, they asked for a continuance.
Oh, so we do have a...
They're still reviewing plans, Bill's comments, they're not ready yet. So, that'll probably go into their meeting, and I believe it's September.
But the request from this board is the straight-up application, right?
I'm sorry?
Planning board may be going into different iterations of that request, but we don't have that. All we have is their initial application, correct?
When they filed, it was three applications, one for actual for projection...
Yeah, I saw that.
One for the site plan review, and one for the special program.
For the drive.
They're still going to build that, huh?
Well, they want to.
Oh, they renewed the lease for five more years.
Oh, you know it.
Ray told me that he renewed it.
It'd be smart for them to have one on the right side and one on the left side. It would really be, it really would be.
So, it is a lot for you there.
Well, I don't know if there is. Is there, is there, has it, is there a change?
Is there gravel there?
Well, I know, but is there a change in this one? We at least know about that one.
I haven't gone through it, you know?
We don't have time.
It might be about some coffee.
No, but they're working with the planning board.
But it said super... You can stand your spoon up and... Excuse me? Please, the bomb is down, go outside and go around, and they're downstairs.
Lights on the church?
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't, I mean, I don't think we have enough time to make a...
No, this, yeah, I was going to say, there's a lot that's in here.
So...
I didn't figure that out yet, because there's too many applications for each one of them. I mean, there's plans for three here, I see.
Can, is there a problem if this leaves the town hall?
Yeah, kind of, it's my own, it's on file.
All right. Do we have any volunteers who would like to review it and give the board an update at the next meeting?
This application, June nineteenth, but you have to...
Yeah, and I guess it's continued.
Quite frankly, I think in the spirit of hazing, a new girl woman should have to do it.
Yes, that's right.
I mean, there is, you know, still...
You're a veteran, Rita, you can do that, no problem at all.
See what I meant about him being a problem?
I get the Duncan Donuts, too.
She even wore her Hawaiian outfit, you know?
Really?
Yeah, we do that every summer, right?
See, as a man, I don't ever feel comfortable with a problem. That might be a crime, I'm not sure, but it might be.
So, Mike, would you have a problem between now and the next meeting? Going through that application and bringing the board up to speed? I mean, it's just...
Basically, they want to take out the hill and cross some Duncan Donuts.
What?
So, they go the Duncan Donuts, right?
Oh, okay, so that's what it is. Okay, because that hill had been in contention.
So, you're not going to be able to go flooding anymore. The one right across on, like by 146?
They've been trying to cut into it on the other side, and it's, the whole thing, things going to collapse.
I was just going to say, because the lady that owns that was refusing to write.
Duncan Donuts.
Didn't want to let it go.
Would you have a problem?
No, I would not.
Between now, I mean, we got to leave it in the town hall, it's only copy, but...
It's 146 on the side.
This isn't, okay, that wouldn't work.
So, here's the access road to...
As far as the seventy-four Main Street?
Right. You just wouldn't tell anybody.
They're working on that now. Yeah, they're working on that hill now.
We all made a decision on the seventy-four Main Street one.
I'm sorry?
We made it, we, as a board, made a decision on the seventy-four Main Street one. My concerns have not gone away.
Yeah, I don't mind having a window, but I mean, I'm more of a, the public safety thing.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a telephone call, the blind side on the, you know, coming in, coming in from the west.
Taking a left turn.
Making a left-hand turn. All that was brought up, all that was brought up. And they said, the other thing that they were concerned about with tractor trailers, that would stop them for coffee, like they do on the Boll's.
Yeah, yeah.
They just tore down the sides, they just keep on hitting, and finally, they fell down.
That's where they go.
They just leave there and go inside. So, we could be doing the same thing on Gil's side.
Yeah, that's bad.
And pulling in there, she'd have a cow. But I mean, they have all those concerns, I'm serious, you know?
My opinion of the right turn, right turn only, in and out.
Yeah, that's the only way to go.
Up in that area.
The daughter, the daughter too got killed, didn't she?
Right out.
Didn't the mother and the daughter get killed down by Duncan Donuts?
It wasn't a daughter, it was two daughters.
Two daughters.
Two daughters, was it, state police?
No, 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 down by this...
Oh, no, the other one, yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, it was the mother and the daughter.
She was turning, she was turning in, somebody turned in and hit the minivan.
Yeah, right there, right?
Nice people, they, they're nice people.
Well, so, would you, you-
You're familiar with what the board's concerns were.
Our concerns were public safety, and the fact that it's on the left-hand side of the road.
Whole marriage died within a year.
I know.
You can't change that, but you can change the direction of the traffic entering the property. No, but if you only had right turn in, only off of 16.
Yeah.
And right turn out, out only.
I'm gonna say no, because I'm in the middle of a job, so.
There.
I'm taking my first vacation.
Oh, on Riedel.
You're bringing the traffic back away from that.
Five or six years?
So, wow.
So I can do it on the 24th, after the 24th of August, I can read something if you'd like.
Maybe before our August meeting?
So, I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to do that.
All right.
But it's not gonna be until then.
That's fine. No, we'll just get for an update at our next meeting, and we can't present any opinion to them until we know, to a familiar-
If you took it out of there.
We're forced, I can't leave the town hall.
No, no, I understand, because I am, after all, a structured person.
Should we write some comments on the Duncan Donuts proposal?
The fact that you know that.
Turn it back in.
Yeah, left-hand turn.
Right-hand turn only.
Yeah, left-hand turn's a problem, so right-hand turn only, so you're saying-
Entering and exiting on the Route 16 would be right turn in and right turn out.
Why can't we simply write, we thought this was an abomination when we reviewed it, it remains an abomination.
Yeah.
Isn't that sort of something all up?
Change.
They, they, they were talking about that telephone pole, and said, no, we don't want to take it out, we didn't feel, we don't feel that would be a, you know, any, any kind of concern.
That would be directing all eastbound traffic onto Riedel to enter the property.
Yeah.
We're usually more confident with it.
Yes.
Not a lot.
Turning lane, I can just imagine people just going straight right into the car that are into that.
Mr. Building Inspector, may I ask you a question? So, you have, you have these two lovely neighbors who are battling betwixt themselves, and there is a parcel of a building that's obviously been constructed longer than 20 years ago, which means that there's no real good argument that I can see that can be made to rebut that you now own the property adverse pressurize.
I don't think we can discuss this.
No, this is hypothetical, this is hypothetical. How does the intersection of the adverse property connect in with a building permit? And I'm not asking for specific, in a specific sense of facts, I'm just asking in, in the sense that-
Who the hell do you think you're talking to?
So, I-
You're not really-
The best thing we always say is you better on the board.
Man, I love you.
So, I, I want to understand, I want to understand the answer to this.
Bobby, I don't understand who you think you're talking to.
I'll make it up, there is a lot A, and lot A builds a building onto lot B. Half of the building from lot A is on lot B, and it is there, open, notorious, known to the world for 20 years.
But that was the case.
But that's on the case, but how would that-
That was in the middle of the word.
But how would that intersect? What, what would that happen?
The guy who owns the lot, owns the building.
If I didn't have the building permit?
I think we need to cut this short, Larry. I think we need to cut this short.
Or it's an unfair question, it's an unfair question, I got, no, 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 I know.